We now call to order the 2015 canvassing board meeting for return of election results and the city council organizational meeting. I'd like to first have a roll call by the deputy clerk.
Mr. O'Connor.
Present.
Mrs. Vok.
Present.
Mr. Kement.
Present.
And if anyone would like to join us, we will now have the pledge of allegiance by the city clerk.
Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republican Party, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, Mrs. Vok, could you please give us a report on the election results?
Yes, we received the certified election results, and I'm happy to say that the election process went very smoothly this year.
And I can attest to that, too. And if Mr. O'Connor, would you please read aloud for the record the board's proposed resolution certifying the election results?
A resolution number 2015-36, a resolution of the canvassing board, the City of Vero Beach, Florida, certifying the results of the municipal general election held on the third day of November 2015 in the City of Vero Beach, Florida. Whereas the election returns for the municipal general election held in the City of Vero Beach, Florida on November the 3rd, 2015, have been tabulated and certified by the Indian River County Supervisor of Elections and canvassed and certified by the canvassing board of the City of Vero Beach, as evidenced by the certificate of the canvassing board. Official returns, a copy of which is attached heretofore as Exhibit A and incorporated herein, and whereas the certified official election returns show the results of the municipal general election are as follows: City Council, two-year term, two elected; Harry Howe, 1,074 votes; Laura Moss, 948 votes; Dick Winger, 1,178 votes; Brian Hetty, 346 votes; Amelia Jane Graves, 1,024 votes. Now therefore be it resolved by the canvassing board of the City of Vero Beach that the results of the municipal general election held in the City of Vero Beach on November the 3rd, 2015 are certified to be as shown above in the resolution, with the results that Harry Howe and Dick Winger are hereby declared to be duly elected members of the City Council of the City of Vero Beach, Florida, for the ensuing two-year term, and all as duly tabulated and certified by the Indian River County Supervisor of Elections done and entered the 16th day of November 2015. I make a motion to accept the resolution.
I'll second that motion.
Is there any public comment on the resolution as proposed? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll on the resolution?
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mrs. Vok.
Yes.
Mr. Kement.
The motion to adopt the resolution certifying the election results having been moved, seconded, and having passed has been approved. Would Mr. Winger and Mr. Howe please stand, and the city clerk will administer the oath of office for you. Congratulations. The first order of business for the council will be the election of a mayor. Nominations do not require a second, and after we take nominations, we'll need to hear from the public any comment before we take any votes on mayor. So first, we'll open the floor for nominations for mayor.
It's my pleasure to nominate Jay Kramer for Mayor of Vero Beach.
Are there any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Randy Old.
I'd like to nominate Randy Old.
Any other nominations? Hearing none, nominations are closed.
I'd like to make a comment. I'd like to decline at this time. I think the office of mayor takes a great deal of time. I think it deserves someone who's been in longer than I have, and so I'd like to decline, and maybe at some other time I'd be glad to do it, but at this time, I'd like to decline.
Hearing those comments, are there any other nominations? Hearing none, nominations are closed, but we should hear from the public before we finalize this. Are there any comments from the public on the nomination for mayor being Mr. Jay Kramer? Hearing none, leave by default. Mayor Kramer, you may take the helm.
All right. The second order of business will be electing a vice mayor, and I'd like to nominate Mr. Randy Old. Any other nominations?
And just see if there's any public comment on the nomination.
Is the public inclined to give an opinion on this issue? If not, without any nominations, I believe, Randy, you are the vice mayor.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Do we have any further business that we want to attend to, or any comments before the public before we move on?
How about seating arrangements?
I was just going to ask, are we going to change Mr. Old sitting next to you?
Excuse me?
The seating arrangement, I think Mr. Old would sit next to the mayor.
The vice mayor sits to the right of the mayor.
Do you want to sit down there, Dick?
No, I'd rather sit next to you.
Well, why don't you sit next to me? We can slide all over wherever we want to sit. Do we have any other business beyond this?
The only other thing I did want to mention, I have given everybody copies of their appointments to the different council committees, and we will discuss that tomorrow night's meeting.
Wonderful. And we do have general public comment, and then we'll have a short sunshine law briefing.
Okay. With that, is there any general comment? Anybody like to say anything? Mr. Wilson?
Good morning, council. Congratulations. I am shocked by the result of this mayor's election. The reason I wanted to -- this is a new beginning, a new day. Every time we elect a new council, there's a new chance for a new future. And after this election, there was a lot of talk and a lot of consternation about the low voter turnout in the City of Vero Beach. There's been a lot of talk about it in the press, and perhaps maybe we should think about that a second, because the analysis of the elections, what do you expect? When time after time after time, voters go to the polls, and they're either ignored or even worse yet deceived. When you look at the last several years, there are really four reasons why you have a low voter turnout. Number one is they've been deceived by political leaders for many years. George Orwell wrote, "In an age of universal deception, telling the truth becomes a revolutionary act." And that's what happens when you erode the confidence voters have in a government. The second is that the truth hurts, and sometimes when you tell the truth, people don't want you to tell the truth. So I don't know when telling the truth became something bad and deceiving the public became something good. So when you send out information to voters that's absolutely true, you can't decry that it's negative if it's true. That's the reason you're held accountable as elected officials, and that's another reason why people haven't voted, is because politicians and political leaders have not been held accountable. The third reason you have low voter turnout is because of the unnecessary and strong control we have by special interest groups in this town. There's one particular special interest group that provides over 2,000 members and often provides the tipping point for both money and votes in our community. The next reason is misinformation in the press, because we've had warring newspapers and little television and little radio. The people have had to seek alternative means of being educated on the issues, and that often is what's now called advocacy journalism. Advocacy journalism is short for propaganda. It's done by bloggers who have no responsibility to the truth, no accountability, no sworn duty to accuracy, and they're funded heavily by the same special interest group who has given some of the most notorious bloggers over $10,000 in the last election cycle. But most of all, and the reason that there's something that you can do as a council when you go forward is, first of all, recognize that you are eroding the confidence of government by being less than truthful in many cases. But the other problem is, is that the City of Vero Beach has a rigged election process. And there's two parts of that rigged election process. The first is multiple voting. Being able to vote for multiple candidates makes campaigns a team sport, where you have groups of people running against another group of people. And as a result, you may not have the most qualified people, you just have the most people from a certain group. I would like to see you consider changing the ordinances of how you vote, so that you vote once, and you vote for the most qualified person, and the other person can vote once and for the most qualified person. What you have now is you can vote for up to three candidates. Seventy percent of the people failed to vote their third vote. Ninety percent give two votes, generally to the same group. So your normal pattern is, is that you have the top vote getter from Group A is the first place, top vote getter from Group B gets second place, and then the second person from Group A goes back and gets third place. And as a result, that almost guarantees a continual flow of special interest-backed candidates. The other problem you have in the election is that you have a particular ordinance that allows you to circumvent the resign-to-run law. Florida's resign-to-run law is very clear, but the reason that Vero voters don't get a lot of information is because they don't have to qualify until September. Every other candidate in the county qualifies earlier in the summer and has a longer period of time for voters to be able to inspect their positions. But what happens in the City of Vero Beach is, is that you've set your qualifying day for two weeks after the primary. And that setting qualifying day for two weeks after the primary allows someone on the city council to run for the county commission without the threat of losing his seat or her seat, because then they get to come back, they can lose the county commission race, and then they can come back and take their seat on the city council almost infinitely. So you've really got two major problems with the way people vote. And you've got a major problem with the mindset of the voter in that the voters are tired, and that's the reason for a low turnout. And you know what? You know why the Vero Beach voters have given up on Vero Beach? It's because Vero Beach has given up on Vero Beach voters. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? If not, we'll go ahead and move into the sunshine briefing.
And usually I have Peggy Lyon put on a presentation, but she's on a well-deserved day off, so we have the second-best thing. We have one of her last presentations that we're going to play for you. It's very short, to the point, and I think you'll enjoy it. And if you turn on your screens in front of you, if they aren't on -- we don't have any sound, though. The board or commission members that are present, please also, it's for your benefit, too.
Good morning, and congratulations again to our newly-elected, our Dick, who was just here a couple of days ago, it probably doesn't feel like you left the chamber, and to our new mayor.
Again, I'm sorry, is that microphone on?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
I'm just going to charge you all with talking into the microphone. The first thing I did was not do it. We always do a sunshine law and public records law presentation, and I have seen that sunshine presentation and done it so many times. In fact, Tammy and I did it just a couple of weeks ago for the recreation commission. So I'm going to do something a little bit different today. I'm going to do Peggy's Top 10 Sunshine and Public Record Law questions. Probably won't be as exciting as Jay Leno, but it's questions that I've gotten mostly from the boards and commissions. This council this past year has just been excellent. Haven't really had that many questions except towards the end with the community forums. We had a flurry of questions then. But for the most part, you all know, you know the public records law, you know the sunshine law, but we'll go forward with this and see how it goes. And I know we're up against an 11 o'clock deadline for yet another meeting, so I promised Jim I would be very quick. So the interesting stuff I had at the beginning of my speech, I'm going to leave off, except maybe one really good quote from Sarasota on the public records law that I'll tell you at the end if I remember and if you remind me. But if you get a chance to just take a look on Google at Orange County Text Gate this past year, it is just unbelievable. And if you can't find it, come by my office singly, of course, not altogether, and I'll tell you about the facts of that case, because it's just unbelievable what some elected officials can get in trouble doing. And I know you all won't. So with that said, let's go on the Top 10 list, Peggy's Top 10 List. Okay, the first one. I get this from a lot of people. In fact, I served hot dogs at the football game last night for the math team, and I got this question from one of the women in there, and it was, "What is the sunshine law and what makes it so tricky?" And it's funny, when I explained it to her at the football game, she was quiet for a minute, and then she said, "That is a crazy way to do business." And it probably is, but it's the law. I felt like one of those old 1950 cops from an old TV show. It's the law, ma'am. And it is, so we're stuck with it. We might as well make the best of it. Okay, this is about as short as I can get it. The sunshine law is the right of people to access government meetings that are open and noticed and where minutes are taken. That's pretty much it. And it seems so easy, and it seems so straightforward, but there are so many wrinkles, as Wayne and Tammy and all of you can attest. So my second question is going to be, what are some of those nuances or wrinkles? And here's just a couple of them. Open meeting sounds really obvious, but if there isn't enough space for everybody to be there, it's not open. If the public's required to pay a fee or buy a lunch, it's not open. If the committee meets out of town or in a place that isn't easily accessible to the public, it's not an open meeting. And this is a really strange one. If a governing body with ultimate decision-making authority is on a fact-finding field trip on a school bus, even where no one speaks to each other, they're seated a row apart, the press is invited along, it's not a legal open meeting. There are lots of wrinkles, and it's all in this book. And Tammy and Wayne and I are pretty good at ferreting out what's an open meeting and what isn't. So if you have any questions, you know where we are. Okay, number two. Oh, wait, I had two more things than number one. Okay, reasonable notice. It can depend on the circumstances. For example, reasonable notice here is usually published in the newspaper, on the website, that's kind of the traditional thing. But you ask any of the people here during the 2004 hurricanes, it was pretty bad. We didn't have any electricity, the press really wasn't up and running much, so we posted on the front door of City Hall, and that was reasonable under the circumstances. So even that can change. Minutes have to be taken, that can vary, too. In a closed meeting where certain discussions about pending litigation are allowed as an exception to the sunshine law, Tammy's not even allowed into the meeting. It has to be a court reporter who takes the minutes. So there's all kinds of nuances. Number two, so what do I need to remember to stay in compliance with the sunshine law? Here it is. Don't talk to other members of your board about public government business anyplace except at an open, notice public meeting where minutes are taken. And I just went to Barbara Peterson of First Amendment Foundation's sunshine law presentation a couple of weeks ago in Stuart, and she advised to forget the old "where foreseeable action may be taken" language. That's from an old 1973 district court case. She says that what might be foreseeable today could well pop up on your council agenda tomorrow. So just remember, even if it's foreseeable or not foreseeable, if it's public government business, don't talk about it with these other people up here, except in this chamber or when we tell you it's an open meeting. Does that include -- number three, does that include other forms of communication like email? Yes. And phone calls, and Twitter, and tweets, and text messages like Orange County Text Gate, and instant messages, and BlackBerry messages, and Facebook. It's a whole new world out there, but the same rules still apply. Number four, this is a big one, this comes up a lot. Can I ever send a written communication to the other members of my council board or commission? Yes, but only a one-way communication and only through the city clerk. Tammy's staff will make sure that the communication is added to your next agenda for all the members of your collegial body to discuss in the sunshine. And this applies to all the boards and commissions, too, not just the council who I'm talking to, everybody out there. Here's another one. Number five, I get this a lot. Can I talk about public government business to staff, my constituents, members of other boards and commissions? For example, your planning and zoning board, can you talk to them? Yes, probably, but with these considerations in mind. You can't evade the sunshine law by using staff or your constituents or members of other boards and commissions to be liaisons between you and members of your collegial body. You can't tell someone on the planning and zoning board, hey, well, you tell Jay Kramer this, or, you know, that's just not done. You can't meet with more than one member of another board or commission. You can't meet with two members of your planning and zoning board, only one at a time. And for quasi-judicial matters, and I know you haven't done one yet, Ms. Graves, we did one Tuesday, but for quasi-judicial matters, and it's all in the materials that I gave you, you sit as a judge, and you can't speak to your constituents outside of this hearing because, just like a judge, you want it to be all done here, and you have to hear all the testimony here. So, and by the way, all the materials I gave you, if you all have multiple copies of them from years past, just give them to Tammy, and I'll recycle them this year with the new boards and commission members. Number six, as an elected and appointed government public official, can I attend other government meetings? Can I make comments at those meetings? Yes and yes, but you cannot get into a back-and-forth discussion with another member of your same council board or commission on public government business. So you can come up to the podium, you can speak, but just be careful about the back-and-forth. This is a really tricky one, and I've had to mention this to a couple of the boards and commissions this year. There is a way to violate the sunshine law even when you're at an open, notice public meeting. And that's by, you're sitting at the dais in the meeting, and you lean back, and you chat with the person on either side of you so that nobody else can hear it. That's a sunshine law violation if you're speaking about public matters. And plus, it has a kind of funny appearance of impropriety. And also, just like high school and grammar school, if you pass a note to somebody up there, that's a public record. And if somebody from the audience sees it, Orange County Text Gate, you could be asked for that. And if you've destroyed it, or if you've texted back and forth with somebody in the audience and someone asks for it, and that's something I forgot to mention, I guess I'm coming up to it on public records, but if you don't know how to save something, don't use that form of a medium. We'll get to that in a bit. Do I have to vote on a matter before my collegial body? Sorry, that's number eight. We're almost done. Jim, I'm doing good. Yes, you have to vote. There's a Florida statute that says you have to vote if you're up here, except when you have either a valid financial conflict, and that's spelled out in the materials I gave you, and if any of you need to talk to us about it, come see me, or, and this is a bit trickier, or a personal bias so invasive that you just can't vote fairly, and it would deprive an applicant of fundamental due process. And we've had that come up a little bit over the last however many years we've been doing this, right, Tammy and Wayne? So otherwise, Florida statutes require that if you're present in a meeting, you have to vote. So if you've got one of these problems, come see us beforehand, and we'll figure out some way. Okay, so now we're going to go into a little bit of public record stuff. Okay, what is a public record? It's any record that you create or receive having to do with the official government business of your collegial body. And here's the tricky part, whatever you create has to be retained and preserved under the state retention schedule. Tammy's office is in charge of this. The state retention schedule is really interesting if you take a look at it. It actually goes through and lists what every different kind of document could possibly be and how long Tammy has to keep it. So like I said, the best way to stay lawfully within the public records law, and that's the next question, is it's not the medium, it's the message that makes something a public record. It's not whether it's on your iPhone or on your personal computer or any of these other places, it's still a public record. And there's 1,084 public record exemptions, and they're scattered through state statutes, and they're kind of tricky to find, and the legislator tinkers with them every year. So it's hard for us to stay on top of them. So just whatever you do with public business, if you write it down in any way, shape, or form, and it doesn't have to just be written, it can be anything, the rules apply across the board, Facebook, the whole nine yards, just make sure that if you use it, you know how to retain it and give a copy to Tammy's office, because she'll keep all this stuff and make sure it's done correctly. Oh, that's it. Except, one more thing, I just want to mention the appearance of impropriety. I mean, it really is the court of popular opinion, and although an action might not reach the level where we're calling the Ethics Department in Tallahassee, if it just doesn't seem right to you, follow your gut instincts and just don't do it. If you get into a meeting and it doesn't seem like it's right, leave the meeting if it's not noticed correctly. Can you meet with other members of your collegial body and talk about anything else under the sun besides public business? Yes, talk about the weather, gator football, if you can stand it, things like that. But just remember that the appearance of you two at a party, off in a corner chatting together about gator football, although it might be perfectly legal, just doesn't, might not look right. And there's a lot of gotcha. There's gotcha on the state level. We had a couple of brothers this past year, I don't remember their names, but they were giving public records requests to police departments all over the state of Florida. Tricky public records requests, the kind where Tammy and Wayne and I are scratching our heads and call and pack leasing up at the state. And then if you don't do it exactly by the rules, bang, they've got you. And there's local people like that, too. I mean, there's a lot of wonderful people in this town, but there's, you know. So just remember the appearance of impropriety, tuck it in the back of your mind. And if I can just have one more second to read that one? Okay. This is the best quote I heard all year on the public records law, and it came from a Sarasota city manager who tried to explain why his city's advisory board's series of really stupid and expensive missteps cost taxpayers $100,000 in legal fees by using their iPhones and gadgets to communicate with each other. He said, "Florida's like a giant government nudist colony. We don't have anything to hide, but it's boring and not that attractive." And after that snarky quote, I just have to give one more quote. I really love this because I was raised in Vero Beach, and my family's been here since '58, which is nowhere near as long as the rest of some of you guys, but it looks pretty far back in the rearview mirror to me right now. But this came from a Florida Bar Journal article in May of 2013, and it was about a city. And the author says, "Towns are not just legal and governmental entities, they are places, they exist in people's minds and hearts." And with that, I'll close. Thank you.
Seeing none, I believe.
Wayne, do you have anything further?
Nothing else, unless anyone had a question.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would request that my seat be reinstated to your left as a, having served in the council for five years and having seniority.
I have no objection. I have no objection. Does anybody else want to change? I mean, it really is whatever you want. Okay. I would entertain a motion for adjournment if anybody else doesn't have anything else.
I'll second.
All right, so moved, or adjourned?